Our first order will be the Pledge of Allegiance.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with a routine and justice.
Before I move on to the agenda, a little change. Our chairman, Mark Clark's not here tonight. I'm the vice chairman, so I'm filling in tonight for Mark. I'm Mike Flynn, to anybody that might not know that. We do have one other committee member gone, and it's Arlie Herbert. Otherwise, we're here, and Patrick Byron is on the Zoom with us. So I just want to let you know, you know, he was here on the committee. With that said, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Okay, so Jordan, Lynn, did you get that?
Kelly.
Kelly, I'm sorry. And I'll give it to Louis as a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. So all in favor. Our next order is to approve the minutes of January 20th. Any discussion on changes or anything? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the January 20th meeting. I thought we already had done that.
Yeah, I thought I did, yeah. I'm gonna abstain because I was marshaled from that I wasn't there.
All right, all in favor of approving the minutes from the last meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And I'm not hearing anything from Patrick, so I assume that's all in favor. Thought he might do. Hey, Tom, there you go. Thank you. I'll be watching for that. Our next order of business will be to move to our petitions. And the first one is petition PC 217, our docket number, PC 217-2201. And the petitioner's request, petitioner seeks a conditional use permit to allow a 1 megawatt large-scale solar energy system in the agricultural resource conservation zoning district pursuant to Chapter 12.3 of the Winona County ordinance, zoning ordinance. So Eric, I think, is in charge of this one. Is that right? Eric Johnson?
Yeah, we're, we're gonna see. Eric can help with it for a couple of days. He's gonna try to join us to do this. Otherwise, I will, and Stephanie will pull up the petition. So just give us one second, otherwise I've got the backup here, too.
Okay.
This is on. Okay, good. Everybody hear me okay? There's no buzzing?
Those are on Zoom people, Zoom. Patrick, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay. Eric, are you on or no? He might be having trouble, or he might still be feeling not so, so great. So, so the CUP request, as Acting Chairman Flynn stated, is for that, for a 1 megawatt large solar facility. Randy and Valerie Breyer are here tonight, and they'll be available, should the planning commission wish to speak to them. Novel Energy Solutions LLC is their partner in this, and it's pursuant to Chapter 12.3 of the zoning ordinance, as was read. Next slide, please. There's kind of an overview map, Eric, kind of showing Ridgeway on the west side, and on that little yellow outline is the location of the project. Next slide, please. That one's south of 90. Access would be from the north on County 104, and as such, highway department permit would be required. It's in Pleasant Hill Township, as you can see. Next slide, please. This developer has done solar projects elsewhere in the county that have been permitted. It's about five acres of 137.6 acre parcel. And as Jordan was alluding to earlier, it's a connection to XL Energy. It's cropland at the present time. Neighbors are fairly far away, 600 feet to the south, 800 feet to the east, 1,600 feet to the west, especially the western one. The setback is 65 feet from the road line, but this project would be set back about 130 feet at this time. Next slide, please. These are mapped sinkholes in the area. So the soils are highly erodible on this site, and there is also some evidence that there may be a sinkhole that's closer to the proposed project area, but not actually in the proposed project area. These are the mapped ones. The next slide shows a point of interest that looks a little bit like it might be a sinkhole. Yes, Lynn?
Well, I'm sorry. I was waiting for an overlay of where the proposed project was with the sinkhole map, but I guess we don't have it.
It's on page 46.
And we have some more, some more layouts coming up as well. Next slide, please. So this is just a little bit more of a close-up of, of that point of interest. Okay, next slide, please. So this is the layout of the array. It's showing some of the screening that would, would be proposed. This is a very embryonic look at that part of it, but it shows the approximate delineation of the arrays. It shows the road coming in from the county road and the approximate layout of, of everything, and also the, the topo lines. Next slide, please. So just like other solar array projects, the, the proposers have a stormwater pollution prevention plan submitted, very preliminary and rustic landscape plans, a decommissioning plan, which we have been requesting $50,000 in financial surety for cash escrow letter of credit, as well as we have been requesting up to this point, $5,000 in cash escrow for a three, held for a three-year period for the establishment of the landscaping and for the pollinator native plantings as ground cover. In this case, the SWIP was approved, our acronyms, by the, it, it has to be approved by the MPC. It's reviewed by the SWCD and by staff that have training in SWIP, or are actually certified in SWIP, and we have two folks that are certified. And a wetland delineation report was submitted as well, just because of wanting to dot the i's as well as some of the topography. Next slide. So we had a lot of submittals, and I know there were a lot of things in your packet. So landscape screening is proposed on three sides of the project. When we see the finished plan, we ask for two kinds of evergreens to be utilized in it, along with some herbaceous material to kind of tie it together, just for the purpose of resilience, because you know how it is, if spruce get a little bit wet, you get spider mites pretty soon, the whole thing is done for. So you want to just have a couple of kinds of plants and then tie it together, so it looks a little bit naturalistic. So we try to keep it fairly simple and basic, but that, the casual passerby might think that it looks attractive, but not have it be onerous for the people that are producing the project, because that's not their main business. So that would be that slide. Next slide, please. So this is a little closer up version of what you saw earlier. I just expanded out just a little bit, but you can see the topo lines underneath a little bit better. Next slide, please. So the soils are primarily class 2, 3, and 4 soils, and the silt loans are considered soils of extreme importance in the state, statewide importance. But there are also some areas that are class 4 soils, which we do not consider prime in this county. The slopes range from 3 to 20. I mentioned earlier that some of the steeper parts are erodible, but also some of the flatter areas are erodible in this particular site. Next slide, please. Making the SWIP more important. Per our practice in the county, and what the planning commission and county board have deemed appropriate, this has been evaluated as a conditional use permit. It doesn't preclude the planning commission from deciding to evaluate it as an interim use permit, however. Staff could not identify a specific date or event for termination, other than sort of the generalized, it's gonna last 25, 30 years. You don't know that for sure. So that, at this time, the staff analysis has been that of a conditional use permit. Next slide, please. Pleasant Hill had no comments. Chairman Ron Frick signed the slip and said, yep, they came before us, and we don't have a comment. Next slide, please. As usual, you want to consider the testimony and all of the information from the staff report and any public testimony in making your decision. And if the decision is to recommend approval, staff included 16 considerations that are conditions in the report. And most of them are quite standard. I believe all of them you have seen before. All right. Eric, did you join us? Did I miss anything that you wanted to impart? Or perhaps he can't, he might not be able to have joined us. So I am not Eric Johnson. I'm Kay Qualley, but I'm happy to answer any questions that I might as staff.
Go ahead.
I actually had a little confusion, and now I'm even having trouble finding. I saw the Department of Army is involved, and that there was a permit to US Army, and it looked like it had not yet been approved.
Are you talking about Army Corps of Engineers and, and something with wetland delineations? Because the wetland delineation did pass. So that they didn't find that a negative determination for, for it, and it's in the packet. So that it can go forward as far as, you know, no, there will be, won't be any loss of wetlands if the project were to be approved and sent along to the county board, and then, and they passed it. So we should be all right that way. And actually, some of the Mezzic mix of the wildflowers and pollinators as ground cover, you know, might like the, the moisture soil areas, as long as it's not a, it's not going to compromise the project in any way. Anything else that I can provide?
Do you happen to know what that point of interest is?
It, it just, it looked a little bit like it had potential for becoming a sinkhole, but, but, you know, we're not the landowners. We look at it from the flyover, from the GIS standpoint, and so Eric put a pin there saying, you know, it wouldn't be a, a total shock if some kind of sinkhole appeared someplace on that property, other properties nearby, just because, as you could see from the red, it, you know, it's not totally uncommon in that area. But we have no knowledge that it is actually a, a sinkhole or the beginning of one. We just, we just pinned it because that was part of the exhibits that we were presenting, which included sinkholes of interest in the area.
And another couple of questions. You mentioned that Novel Energy Solutions has done other projects in Winona?
Yes.
And do we have any information on the quality of the, any screening those projects may have done?
Well, let's just say this. At the very beginning, in sort of the infancy of the 1 megawatt projects, sort of a confluence of our staff turnover, not getting out to look at them frequently enough, and I'm gonna do a shout out to our chair, Mark Clark, and Arlie Herbert, even though they couldn't be here tonight, I know if they were here, they'd say, Kay, we've been telling you to get out and look at them, so this fall, we got about half of them inspected. Because otherwise, and as Mark has said before, what do we make conditions for if you're not gonna look at them and enforce them? So I want to say that some of that would be on the department. Some of it, though, in the last three years, I've sent letters and of increasing stringency to try to get plants replaced that are broken off, or that, where we're supposed to have screening, that screening hasn't been achieved, where thistles, patches, you know, I've asked them to cut them and bag them and spray them, because they were blowing around and that kind of thing. That, that could be true of every project, not to pick on this particular developer. So I would say the more recent projects are starting to really come along and look much better. And I think also the inspection level. I mean, nobody likes somebody coming out from the county saying, you know, you need to sharpen things up here, but yet if you folks, you know, provide those conditions for somebody to get a permit, then it's, it's really our responsibility to make sure that it's going, that it's happening in that fashion. So, yeah, they haven't, they weren't great at the beginning, so they are improving.
So when you do this enforcement, is it the landowner's responsibility, or is it the project, who, whatever you call them, the vendor?
Right. So one of the conditions that you folks added, at the request of staff, I think, but also on your own, a couple of years back, was to have the original project name that it was proposed under and approved under carry with the project indefinitely. Because I've told the story before, where this guy named Rocky calls me up, probably a Ben Jordan's ear about this a time or two, and he's referring to a project name. I've never heard of him, his company, or the project name, and he's talking to me about, you know, the landscaping, because somebody got him a letter somehow that we sent. And we sent out a few. And I just said, okay, we gotta back up and find the original project name. So by doing that, by you folks adding that and approving that as a condition, that is helping definitely. But ultimately, if we can't find who is the developer or who currently owns a project, if they haven't kept in touch with us like they're supposed to, the property owner that's getting the check in the mail is ultimately gonna be responsible for finding that, that individual. Now, there's phone numbers on your fences, you know, if something happens, it's usually gonna get you to somebody who's electrical. But you can, you know, wind it backwards, and we've done that a time or two without disturbing the property owner.
Okay.
Yeah. So my company.
My question is more a legal question. Who's legally responsible for the maintenance of the landscaping?
Well, we have a lawyer on with us. From a planning standpoint, I'd have to say the property owner, but Stephanie, have you got a? Can you hear us, Stephanie? Wonder if the?
Hi, Kay. This is, this is Eric. Can you hear me?
Yes. Hi, Eric.
I, I, I'm just on the phone. I'm trying to connect to the video, too, but I'm having all kinds of problems. I've been trying to get on since 6:30, so.
Okay, well, we, we rolled through all the slides for Breyer, and just wanted to know if there was anything unusual, if you wanted to add, as long as I'm still at the podium, if that's all right with the planning commission.
No, no, that's fine, unless there's some questions you think that I could be of help with.
Did Kelly get her question?
No, and Stephanie is unmuted now. Stephanie, can you answer Kelly's question?
Can you hear me now, Kay?
Yes, we can hear you now. If everyone else that's online could please mute themselves, so we can hear Stephanie, that would be great.
Sorry about that. My headset seems to be not working. The, the short answer is, at the end of the day, the conditions go with the parcel, which means that it all falls back on the property owner if they don't have someone else to, that is complying with it. So we try to get compliance from those that are involved in the project, but there is always a last resort of the property owner.
Thank you.
Louis, how far is the distribution center of the substation to these projects?
I have no idea. We'll have to. We have some representatives with us. We, we have the Breyers here. Do we have anybody from Novel? Okay, so when we get to the point of the petitioners, I ask that you ask him that question. Anything else for staff? All right, thank you. Thank you.
Just now. With that said, though, let's let's have the petitioners come up, and if you have anything you want to contribute or say.
Randy Breyer. I live at 35537 Growth Drive, Houston. You got questions? He's the guy that should be asked.
Yeah, I'm Scott Temple. I'm with Novel Energy.
Do you want to step up and explain your project or anything about your petition?
I think Kay's done a real, real thorough job. One note is that the project size is 12 acres, not five. Things, things happen. And we need to be within a mile of the, the substation generally, and I'm not sure the exact distance of this one, but we, I, I can get that information, but.
If you're within the mile, that's adequate.
Okay. And as far as I'm, I know, they're, they're responsible for the maintenance of it.
Yeah, that, that's, that's true. With our landscaping, we generally use a local contractor, so we'll be under their warranty, you know, for first two years generally, and then, you know, the, the company maintains things after that.
The distance to the substation, is that a determining factor for where you place a solar garden?
Yeah, it has to be close enough to a substation with a, a three-phase line in order to get, get the power there. If we're, if we're too far away, we have to pay, you know, multiple million dollars to get a, to get the line extended, and so all solar developers are, are limited to those criteria. It needs to be close to a three-phase, close to the transformer in the XL territory with the proper zoning and willing management.
So existing power lines are being used? No new power lines will be reckoned, or?
They're generally several poles that come into the site. XL puts in three, three poles with the recloser, the transformer, and the, the switch pole, and then we generally have one that, that hooks into there. But everything internal to the site is all, all underground, but XL puts facilities on poles.
I'd answered one of my questions. So do, will the power lines come in from the east or the west?
They're coming in right from the, from the, from the road on the, on the northeast. The, the, the line comes right in on the access road. XL Energy needs to have improved surface underneath.
North, northeast corner?
Yeah, north.
So where, let me ask you, where is power going to, what direction from the site? The west, the east, north? I'm trying to, I'm trying to just envision whether there's power lines running over, near, or by either one of those building sites on the north, east corner, and the southwest corner. That's the, that's the question I'm, I'm asking.
I believe that's three-phase right along the, the road. Existing power lines there that we're tapping into.
There won't be any change to either one of those building sites by way of power lines running by their place?
No. Yeah, yeah. So the, the line connects, we connect to the power line right here.
It's an existing overhead power line?
Yep. Yep. They, they put in a pole to intercept.
The buried power line.
Then there's the three, three XL poles, and then I think this is ours.
Okay, so the, the building sites on either corner of this property are not gonna notice any changes?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
How far is this from the other agenda item that we're looking at later and seeing?
This is a couple miles to the, to the east of that.
Yeah, at the most. It's on the other side of the highway.
But definitely more than a mile?
Not much.
Okay.
It's close.
The reason I ask is just that, that's with, from what I understand, with utility scale solar, anything that's owned by the same person, or I'm assuming with Novel Energy, within a mile is considered to be the same, the same power plant, essentially?
Right. Yeah, there are co-location criteria. You get points. You need to have a certain number of points to be considered not co-located, being a mile apart, which is six right off the bat. So there are a lot of other factors in there, including ownership and registration, different, different things like that. It's a scoring system.
So is this considered co-located?
No.
Okay.
Are points good or bad?
Points are good.
Okay.
You, you want to get points.
Okay.
So the other solar array is a different substation?
No, I believe that it's on the same substation. We had five projects in the area that went through a batch study. If you've been paying attention, you'll probably know that XL is really behind in their processing of, of, of the solar. One of the ways they tried to address that was to, to study projects in a batch. So we had, actually had five of them in a, in a facility study that all came out at the same time, saying, yep, we can, we can, we can, we have the hosting capacity. For those projects. That's why we're, we're multiple ones that have had a time.
On XL's hosting capacity map, it shows between 1 and 250 kilowatts are available currently. Do you know exactly how much hosting capacity is gonna be available after these two projects?
It's a kind of a moving target. I don't know what the, what I saw in the, I may be wrong, but I thought I saw in the, in the staff report, it was a distributed generation.
Yeah.
We're, we're not on a distributed, we're the, we're on a different, we're not a DP system, but I think we're on a different just a different category. But to answer your question, no, I don't know how much capacity will, will be left.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Ron, thank you for talking.
Do we have a motion to open a public hearing?
I'll make a motion.
Burton makes the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Louis, second.
Second with you?
Yep. All in favor to open a public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed to that, say nay. And all in favor. So now our public hearing is open. So anybody wishing to speak, the podium is yours. Or against, right?
My name is Marilyn Gellerson, and I live at 38197 County Road 104, which is adjoining property to this field. And you have our questions and the picture. My husband David.
We have some concerns that this is right up to our line fence of our property. And we don't know what it's, we, we don't think it's gonna be beneficial to the valuation of our own property. That, that it's gonna be a detriment. And we're wondering about power lines, and which way the power is going to be going. There are no power lines for the entire quarter mile along this property.
Our power comes from the west, and the property that, on the other side of the field, comes from the east. There are no power line, or, and nor, no power lines over that, that road or field.
And uh, we would like to see an agreement, signed agreement from XL, that they are be standing behind this or in favor of this solar garden. And so far, we haven't seen any, anything. And uh, as far as screening, these panels are supposed to be 14 feet tall. And it was like screening that would cover that.
You have a picture of, out our living room window. That's all from the east side of our house. That's all you see is that big field. And that's all we would see out our whole side of our house, which is all windows, is that field.
I have that picture. Could you put up um an aerial of that so that I could see exactly where your property is? You know, I think it could be any one of them.
We're on the west side of the project.
That's the one I thought. I just want to make it clear to everybody here. And if you could give us the blown up one that I'm looking at right now. I know where your property is. I want everybody else to know where it is.
The little triangle down there on the corner. I know it's gone. Yeah.
Personally, I didn't even get to anyone. I'm gonna put my closer on it.
Yes, right there. That's ours right there.
Right there.
And when you were, they were presenting the screening, they said they were screening on every, they had proposed screening on every side but the west side, and that's our side.
And how many feet would you say you'd be away from the proposed solar panels? Cause I heard testimony that there wasn't anything more than 600 feet, right?
Discrepancy is the parcel line versus the actual solar array. Those are the two different numbers. We're solar array is farther away than the parcel line. The parcel line is ordering their property.
But the 600 feet that I'm referring to, which you just had on slide before that, is not the parcel line, but the actual solar panels. Is that right?
I think solar panels are probably in 600.
So um,
but nothing.
And will the screening be in place before the construction begins?
I would say no, but we have people that'll answer that. I'm, I'm a listener tonight, okay? And here, my questions, I, I'm trying to get everybody to have the right perspective of where you live, how far you're away. How many, cause you know, all these dimensions come out as 1200, 800, 600. And I got your picture here. I'm extrapolating not where it is.
Yeah.
And I think that.
It's not real easy for the picture to tell exactly where.
But I think this might be helpful to go through your questions, why I'm bringing it up.
Yeah, looking down that way, you can see the fence pole. That's the property line, and this is taken while you can see the deck railing on our whole chair.
Across the middle, you, there's, you can see corn stalks. That's, that's the beginning of that property.
Okay, from that fence post that we all can see right in the middle of the picture, which is your property line, right? How far away will the, this barrier or cosmetic vegetation be? Any idea?
I'm gonna have to ask them to sit down and move to the side because I
Can't see.
picked up by the recording, otherwise.
Okay.
All right. No, I'm just, could you just be inside? So that we have six foot social distance. And thank you.
Oh. You mean you?
Right, otherwise the people on the screen won't hear what we're saying.
Right. So I can't answer that, Mr. Chair, uh, because I've just seen this photograph five minutes ago, or five minutes before the meeting started. So without being able to slap some GIS on there and measure to the array as opposed to the property line, clearly the, the house as seen in the parcel ending in 1381 is not right at the property line of the parcel. In addition to that, the solar array is nowhere near uh the property line of the parcel either, hence the measurements. Um, I am going to though, while I'm up here, I hope you don't mind. Uh, but the landscape plans, um, and there was a revised drawing that shows screening on the west side that I did show, um, uh, goes in after the arrays are up because it is scraped clear in order to put the arrays up. So the landscape, and as a former landscape contractor, I will tell you, I want to be the last one in so I can make the site very pretty. And I'm sure that the contractors that will be hired will be reputable as well as wanting that same thing. Um, the recommendation in your packet is that the highest end of the screening sizes for plant material in the Winona County zoning ordinance be used, which would be six foot evergreens. If you put 14 feet foot evergreens in, they do not usually transplant it very well. In fact, my, in my experience, a six foot evergreen in five years' time is bigger than a 10 foot evergreen that you put in that sits and languishes for a bit of time. I can't answer any question about the transformer, but the screening is definitely going up afterwards. And it's usually a combination of a couple kinds of evergreens and some trees and shrubberies, as I mentioned. Um, so uh, let's see, I just want to make sure there's nothing else for staff. Otherwise, I'm going to get out of your way here. Uh, there's escrow accounts for decommissioning are handled through our auditor treasurer and through our finance department. And um hazardous materials are, any panels that are subject to hail or tornadoes are handled through a facility in non-Alaska or one in Cottage Grove where they go to Ohio for removal of hazardous materials. Um, so I think that's it for staff. So I'll get out of your hair.
Thank you.
So you're going to put up six foot trees to cover 14 foot solar panels?
Sir, I'm putting up nothing because I am not the petitioner. I'm a staff member.
But that means we're going to have to look at that for five years at least, minimum five years.
Uh, the waterway that runs down through the center of this forward field is a lot of drainage off from I-90. Uh, does the state have anything to say about what, I mean, the, you're running the solar panels right through that, that waterway. Is that going to affect drainage?
All I can say is we have a full report on the drainage.
Okay.
And the wetlands and things in it. They do have a plan for that.
Okay. And uh, great voltage, is that going to be tested before this goes in full operation? Or shortly after it does?
In my report, it is addressed, um, which is standard.
And uh, is uh, finding arrowheads on this part of the farm? Does that constitute an archaeological discovery?
Because we've got arrowheads that we've found there.
A question for Eric, if he's still online.
Well, this is a point of order. We can engage, this is for us to receive.
Yeah, and we, we, and I'm reading off your list here and kind of checking the points that you've covered.
Normally, we will discuss this.
And
Afterwards, okay.
And, and we will do that.
Okay.
And actually, I normally we don't give you as much time as we had, but I want to be thorough on it. Cause I think some of this issue would be on our next application.
I appreciate it.
Um, so I think without getting into detail, we, we can in our discussions address, address most of your concerns that you've given me. Okay?
All right.
We would like to have them available if we want to ask them a question.
Absolutely. So during our discussion, we'll, we'll close our public meeting and then we will have discussion.
Yeah, okay.
And uh, Steve's suggestion, I would recommend too, that you hang around in case we have a further question. Though you might be able to answer that the rest of us can. Okay? So I thank you for your testimony. Yes.
I would, um, I would recommend that perhaps they take a look at the copy. Do we have a public copy of our packet? Um, because the conditions for any um solar array are, are in there, and many of your concerns are addressed in those conditions. So there is a public copy available outside the door, Kay? And you might want to read those conditions. They're on page um four and five of the, I'm sorry, 40 and 41 of the packet out there. Yeah. All right, thank you.
They can, they can have more time if they have.
If they have more, we'll. Is there anyone else wishing to speak for or against this petition? Again, is there anyone else wishing to speak for or against this petition? Not seeing any, I'm not seeing anything online with hands. For the third time and final time, is there anyone else wishing to speak for or against this petition?
Close public hearing?
Is there a second?
Second.
Jordan, second. All in favor of um closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Nobody, so all in favor. Now, discussion. Go ahead.
Um, I have a, a lot of concerns uh with both of these petitions really. And I'm wondering if it's not best to table these until after the working session next week? Um, I'd, I'd like to, I'd like to have something in writing from XL that says exactly how much grid capacity is left in this area for people to connect their homes and farms with solar. Um, or I would like to see a condition that that um Novel Energy would be willing to dial back their system to accommodate other people in the area that may want to uh get, connect to the grid there. Um.
So if I hear you correctly, you're trying to make a motion to table.
Uh, yeah, I would make that motion.
And do we have a second to table this?
Second. I guess, Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask Eric, what, what sort of a impact would tabling this have on, on the petition in general?
Yeah, can you hear me okay now?
Yep.
Okay, good, good. Um, the applications were received pretty early. Um, with that being said, you know, the 60 days would be up before we could even get it to the county board. So we do have to extend the timeline anyway. So I mean, we would be asking for a 60 day extension if that's the desire of the planning commission to table these actions.
Thank you.
Louis.
I'd like to raise another question. XL is not the only energy in the county. We also have uh M.I.E. energy too. And I don't know how the grid lines and that would connect into around Ridgeway and area.
So you're suggesting tabling that you could get more feedback on that?
We should, we should understand possibly how much M.I.E. would be in on that tour, how much the XL grid is compared to the M.I.E.
I'm, I'm not so sure. It's uh.
It's maybe not your main, but uh it.
I question whether it is your main because XL has this particular area based on state places.
Yeah, I.
And uh, my concern with tabling it, for example, is I think um public testimony, we have some concerns about a number of issues. But I think in our documentation, even though it's quite a list, that most of those have, have been addressed. Okay? Uh, so I, I speak against tabling it, just to be direct. Go ahead.
Yeah, I have a lot of concerns with tabling the application. I've been in a similar situation myself and it played out in court. And what the judge would say in the end is that the applicant is not subject to a moving target. The applicant is subject to the rules and regulations that we have in place today, not what we might do tomorrow. And it would just, but I, I feel like it's unfair to change the rules during the game. Whatever we've done previously, we should do here. And if we're going to do something different in the future, we make that decision. And the application that comes in after that point would then uh have to abide by those rules. But for me, and, and the other thing with the amount of capacity available, I've seen, I've had that concern up in the Rolling Stone area, Mount Vernon, for a long time. And it's really been first come, first served. Whatever capacity is there and, and then once there isn't any more room, there's not. So I mean, our past practice has been if the capacity is there, we're putting them on. And then my personal hope is that then if more capacity is needed, that the power companies would, would figure out a way to, you know, add more capacity. I don't know. Um, I don't know if that's a good plan or not, but that's been what my.
Well, there has to be a load there for the electricity to go to. So until there's, you know, more people with electric cars and things like that, it, it might not change for a really long time. Um, and I guess my concern is that rather than, you know, we're giving a whole bunch of money to one landowner where a whole bunch of landowners could be benefiting from solar.
Mr. Chair, I guess I, I um, you know, our, our charter here is to um, uh, what was that saying from the training? Um, is to do the most good for the, the greatest number of residents that we can. So I understand what Jordan is saying, and I, I think that's a valid concern. And it, it would, it would be worth our time to look at, are, are we um, are we preventing other farmers and residents, are we preventing them from taking advantage of solar by just having these huge um huge solar farms proliferate throughout the county? So I do think that's a valid, a valid concern and worth looking at. And by um, you know, by delaying it, um, I, I don't think we're hurting anything.
Go ahead.
Um, this, this is maybe not quite so pertinent to, to, to the discussion, but when, when we had asked acting chair Flynn, how far away the property was to the west? Page 29, under the overview, says it's approximately 1600 feet to the west. Page 32, under staff analysis, says approximately 400 feet away to the west, which is why I said 400. Page 38, and findings of fact, also says it's approximately 14, 400 feet away to the west, the nearest neighbor. So we've got some inconsistent information about properties uh adjacent to this project that I think we need to clear up, which would also um give us a reason to table this. 400 and 1600 is a big difference.
What, can you, can you tell me where those are again?
Page 32, under number two, this is the evaluation. Staff analysis. Staff analysis, nearest neighbor residence is approximately four hundred feet away. Page thirty-eight, findings of fact, number two, nearest neighboring residence is approximately four hundred feet away. But if you back up to where Acting Chair and I were in disagreement about what was closest to the west, on page twenty-nine, it says the closest neighboring dwellings are approximately sixteen hundred feet to the west.
Where is that?
Page twenty-nine in the beginning, under overview.
Six hundred feet to the south and sixteen hundred feet to the west.
We have a difference of sixteen hundred and four hundred feet for your west neighbors.
Eric Johnson is on the line and in the event this is a scribbler's error for the larger amount. Uh, Eric, can you hear me?
Yeah, I believe when we measured it on G I S, it was approximately four hundred feet to the um west. And I think based on the configuration they had on their map, um, I believe I referenced the one to the east. And that uh is stating sixteen hundred feet. Is that, is that what you see?
Yep.
Sixteen hundred to the west.
Eight hundred to the east.
Eight hundred to the, sixteen hundred to the west. Yes, that's all. Eric?
Yeah.
Is it four hundred, is it four hundred feet from the actual array to the parcel line? Is that what the four hundred feet is?
The project boundary, I believe they had kind of a, where a fenced enclosure would be that contains the arrays. That's where the measurements were, were snapped or measured off of G I S.
Okay, but the solar arrays are significantly back from, and I gotta say, these are some of the poorest pictures I, I've seen. But I'm looking at the actual fields and where the panels are located and trying to overlay that, which we should have in front of us. We shouldn't have to. Uh, we shouldn't have to try to look at where the solar panels are without actually seeing that on a map. So the project boundary is the bright green line, correct?
Kind of the hatched grid configuration.
If you look on page twenty-eight, that's where the hatched grid is.
Also on page forty-three, correct? Looking at, you say page nine.
Yeah, and then you have to kind of take that and overlay it. Yeah.
So a part of our question is still stemming back to, I think, the table right now is whether we table this or not. If I were the applicant, I would assert that I have rights. I've paid my fee. This needs to be processed in a certain amount of time. If there's appropriate reasons, we can ask, we can, we can extend it a certain amount. Okay, right, but we've got to meet, we've got to meet, if the applicant doesn't agree to it, we've got a deadline that we have to have this through the county board by, or it is approved due to us not being done in time. So Kay, are you saying that, uh, what, how long can, if we had, we can demand a certain amount of an extension? Is that thirty or sixty days or?
Sixty, sixty days.
Sorry, I, I was speaking from the chair and that's, if I'm going to make everybody else come to the podium, I should do it too. Uh, Stephanie, you have, it says right here, you have a good connection. So uh, this is a question for you. You're a lawyer. Can you take that one?
The sixty days for um extensions, we can extend it sixty days just by telling them we're extending it sixty days. We are supposed to provide a date by which um it, the final decision would be made. So we would need to essentially bring it back at that March meeting and then provide the board meeting after that uh as the date for the decision. Anything beyond the additional sixty days, we do have to have the applicant's acquiescence.
Stephanie, with respect to us talking about what we made at this upcoming meeting, doesn't, it's my opinion that the applicant has the right to apply under the rules that were in place when they made the applications. Is it fair for us to change the rules during the game, so to speak? I mean, it seems to me this upcoming meeting should be for future applications, not for this one. Where, 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 where would you stand on that legally?
I guess there, there's two different um components to that. The first is the rules apply um at the time that the petition was filed. So the same rules are going to apply whether you hear, make your decision and recommendation today or whether you make that decision and recommendation at the March meeting. The same ordinance is going to apply. However, if you don't feel that you have sufficient information to make an informed decision on this partic- particular petition with the rules before you, then you can uh table it to the next meeting so that you can gather that additional information that you think you need in order to make that decision.
Mr. Chair, um, I guess in terms of um, yeah, the same rules apply. In other words, the same rules that are in the ordinance will apply, it will apply to any project. But my understanding is that we treat each project as an individual project. And there may be different circumstances that require that we apply the rules differently in each and every case. I guess I, I'd like Stephanie's opinion as to whether that is correct or not.
The facts before you are what you apply to the rules before you. So if you don't think you have enough facts, then you can uh continue it. If you think you, if you've got the information um about for, to make a decision on this particular petition, then you should hear, continue to hear it today.
And.
So it does come back to the specific petition and whether or not you need particular information on the specific petition.
And Mr. Chair, just to go further on that, one of the facts is we don't know how much capacity we have. And that's the reason Jordan brings this up.
I would be willing to clarify um as soon as I can find the findings of fact.
But um, could you understand it? That would be singling this application out and treating it differently than all the past applications where if the Excel said the capacity is there, we've approved them. This one, we're saying, we're adding this condition that we want to know that there's more. We want to know exactly how much capacity is available. And from today forward, we're basing them on capacity rather than just whether the capacity was there or not as we have in the past. So I feel that would be a change, change from policy.
And Mr. Chair, I, I think we, we add different conditions onto different projects based upon the circumstance at the time. So I'm saying, you know, different conditions, different circumstances may require different conditions.
Mark Clark, our, our standing chairman for the last couple of years. We, we do ask about capacity every time we, we have one of these petitions. We do ask. And county staff does an amazing job trying to get all the information for us when we meet. But we've always been told we don't know. And then um Chairman Clark started to say that there's farmers who have applied to just offset the expense on their small farm and have been denied. Mark Clark has said that several times.
We actually got a letter on a different one. We voted on stating that specifically, but.
So we haven't, we have been asking that question all along, but we haven't had any, we haven't done anything about all these megawatts going in.
I just want to comment about comments and the grid work. I think that's a subject above and beyond what the petitioner is asking for here. This project has been worked on for over four years, research and development. And now for us to say that Excel Energy, who is the one that's going to commit to this, doesn't have a, an idea of the capacity, I, I don't think that's a fair reason to table this. I really don't. That's a question that we all can ask in a general way. And I'm not against anyone uh having their solar um garden at home or wherever. And, and even in this petition, even in their research on page sixty-two, you can join in and get a ten percent discount. You know, on your, on your bill if you want to participate in this, this green energy movement. And that's where they're, we say, how does this fit our zoning? How's this fit our society and where Winona County is going? And this is not just good for the petitioner. In a way, it's, it's good for all of us. And the fact that this is why we generate our electricity now. So my opinion personally is that I think we're getting off the petition here and going on to what if, what if, when in fact, I think it's fair to find out the distances that you and I talked about. You know, one, one slide said six hundred feet, didn't it? And I took that one. The other one said two hundred feet. Now, another one, I, I can't remember what page it was on. It said uh four hundred feet to the west. And I think it was supposed to be fourteen hundred. Am I right? To the west.
It says sixteen, it says sixteen hundred feet here on page three.
To the west.
Yes.
We have a scribbler's error and two four hundreds.
So they're both four hundred. Four hundred feet to the west. Okay, but in the past.
It's not sixteen hundred to the west.
No, that, the first time that came up, that clearly is scribbler's error.
Okay. And, okay, we're all looking at what we wanted to find point, but we come to the conclusion. But what does our ordinance say is the step back for a solar garden? I think we have something on, on a regulation that way as to how far we're supposed to be from our neighbors.
Three hundred feet from a dwell, from a neighboring dwelling.
So this conforms to our ordinance that it's four hundred feet. All right? If it was two fifty, then I need a variance and we wouldn't be listening to this. You know, I'd go to Jordan's uh committee. So, and the findings of fact, as I read it, we need to get our numbers correct, but we still aren't updated parameters of where we've been on these solar farms. Are we going to make an exception tonight? And the biggest thing is um, under findings of fact, number three. I think the people who spoke at the public meeting, that was, I'm on thirty-eight. Structure in sight will have an appearance that will have an adverse effect. And I think the, the uh conditions to mitigate that are, are number eleven of the sixteen conditions that, that have been outlined, the recommendations. And this isn't new to us. We've seen that before. I, I don't recall one of these solar projects where that wasn't the same.
Did someone inform me why we have a working discussion on solar energy plan before the next?
That was uh asked by the county board, right? Okay.
Correct. And uh, one of the reasons was a financial surety devices and what other counties were doing. And I can just give you a Cliff Notes version. It ranges from zero to two hundred thousand per megawatt for financial surety. And um two hundred being an outlier and zero being an outlier. Most of them that I, I talked to range from twenty-five thousand to one hundred thirty-five thousand and fifty were on the lower end, but still um not on the bottom by any means. So that's one of the things, just a list of the counties and what their financial surety devices are and what the dollar amounts are is something that I'm going to present.
And we're at fifty thousand, you know, um, right now, and we have been for some time. So again, I have a motion to table. I have a second on it.
Yeah, do, do you want me to clarify that?
Well, I want Stephanie to.
I'm Kelly.
Kelly, I mean, Stephanie's on.
Did you want to speak first, Jordan?
Um, I just want to clarify, as far as findings of fact, number five is concerned. If you want me to specifically point something out, the, being consistent with the zoning ordinance, I would say it's hard for me to, to say whether or not it's consistent with the, the purpose of the zoning ordinance without knowing how it's going to affect everyone else and that portion of the grid. So that's, that's just my way of clarifying my motion.
And you know, I did remember there's saying that we received from the attorney for the M C I T when he did the training. And that was the needs of the many outweigh the needs of the few. Okay? So with that in mind, in looking at the findings, um finding number one is I think the most important one in this particular case. Other public facilities and utilities, electricity is a utility. And if a particular project precludes the availability of electricity um for a farmer or a resident to do their own solar, then I think this is the one that specifically addresses what we're talking about. And we'd like to see if it would have a negative impact before we go ahead and approve or deny either of these projects. And that is a, a good reason in my mind to um, to.
Table.
Table it.
Comment something.
This project's been going along, what, for four years? It's been in the planning and all this other stuff?
Yeah, I don't see that it, it doesn't put a, it doesn't put a burden on the utility. It enhances the utility. It's adding more electricity. What you're saying the burden is, is that other people who want to have the same luxury, I mean, not everybody is going to be able to have these. At some point, um, the capacity is filled. And in the past, our past prac- practice has been to approve every one until the electric, until the electric company says we're full. So, I mean.
That's the right way to do it, though. I mean.
That's how, that's been our past practice.
I understand, yeah.
First come, first served.
And in this case too, Excel has stated openly, they're behind the, the game on this. They are not keeping up to the expectations of the legislative mandate by the state of Minnesota. So, and that's why they've been clustering them and doing that to try to keep up. So I'm not so convinced that this going in is going to adjust anything with any neighbor or anything else as far as their ability to add solar to their own situation.
I'm not convinced either, but I'm not convinced either way is, is the issue.
I guess the flip side to, in my mind, to your way of thinking is that the sooner we get to saturation, the sooner the private sector says we need more capacity here and the demands. They increase capacity because more people want to do this versus the more we drag our feet and say no, then they're going to say, well, we're not even at capacity. So why, why, why enhance that uh capacity out there? So I don't know. I mean, I, I'm not going to support the tabling, but it's certain, whatever everyone decides to do, I'm fine with. So.
If there's no other, if there are no, if there's no other discussion or comments, I'd like to call the question.
Thank you. I'm ready for that.
Okay.
I just didn't want to do it as chair. All right. So that's why I came back to. So we have a motion, a second. We've had a lot of discussions. How many in favor of tabling this petition tonight? Say aye. How many?
What does Patrick say?
I'm waiting for the rest of the.
He's, yeah, he's, he's, he might be a nay, so you gotta wait.
Those against it say nay.
Nay.
Nay, I'm against it. I didn't even. I'm trying to see it, but I can't pick it up.
His, his hand is up.
Nay.
Okay, so it hasn't passed. Or to three, right? So that brings us back to the findings of fact and where do we want to go on this? Can I have a motion to move this forward?
Motion to move finding of facts, but I'd like to, when we get done, to have the correction for the footages.
That we can assure will happen. Make that in your motion.
I would like to prove fact that the correct distances are appropriate. But I think one thing should be added in there is how far is the line from the property line also for dwelling?
So your motion is to approve and accept the findings of fact with the corrections that we've talked about.
Plus the corrections, as they put in there, they had it from the dwelling. I think we should also have the distance to the property line, too. I think that's amenable, so there isn't much difference, but.
I'm going to have Kay help me out and see if we can get clarity on a uniform way to, that is consistent with all the other ones we've done.
So finding clarification on the finding of fact number two.
Thank you.
Under finding of fact number two, I believe it states that it's four hundred feet away from the residence to the west. The scribbler's errors in the staff report, which I've already scribbled out, and will just be part of the minutes in the overall packet later. But there, there isn't an error on the finding of fact, which is on the screen here. And Eric, that's correct. You said earlier it was four hundred feet?
Correct. I believe the sixteen hundred was from a sinkhole that was mapped in the nineteen eighty-four geological atlas. But I believe, I, you know, I didn't hear the initial discussion with a neighbor, but there was some concerns that there might be a couple of unidentified sinkholes that warrant a further look at by the consultant to make sure.
Just to be clear, Eric, the, the standard is from the property line, three hundred feet or from the actual residential?
The residence, neighboring dwellings. There's a setback of three hundred feet from any part of the solar array to any neighboring dwelling.
Before we go on, I had a motion, and what I need is a second on it. Then we'll have discussion.
I'm not going to second the motion because I'm not entirely clear what it is.
Mr. Chair, it looks like Patrick raised his hand when you asked for a second.
Okay. Okay. Oh, I got a second, so help, you get clear on it.
The clarification is, is we're also looking at the distance between the array and the dwelling, but we're also should see the distance of the ray from the property line. And that's a distinction, I think, was made in the code that I could understand the people sitting there that they would not want it living right next to their property line if your dwelling was further in. Yeah, I, I agree with all that, and. That, that was my main purpose for it. I hope I clarified what I, my understanding of what should be in there. And maybe that should be also looked in future zoning and planning on property. Future applications, a setback of the array from property line. Okay, but let's.
It's like, I could add that the solar arrays are considered structures. So there is a side yard setback that does apply universal, and that is twenty feet. But that, so the, but the three hundred foot setback goes over and beyond in case there is any dwellings within the vicinity. But it's also applies a, an accessory structure setback of twenty feet from side yards and fifty feet from a rear yard.
Eric, the property owners to the west asserted that there was not screening on the west side. I mean, clearly there has to be screening on, the west side's got to be the most important side.
Right.
With that neighbor. Is that in, that's all?
The, yeah, it's my understanding you received a late addendum that shows that there would be screening conducted on the west side. But the initial application and the, the original packet just showed screening on the north side along County Road one oh four. But obviously, yes, I mean, if you do, based on the topography and the landscape, that was something that we recommended in a condition that, that there would be a condition that screened from that dwelling as well.
I believe it showed it on the presentation, right?
That's.
Yes, I saw those, and I thought that's what it was, those yellow circles, but then I.
And, and just, just, and I'll, I'll sit down, but Eric was speaking. That is a very embryonic and not complete. That's just to indicate the petitioner's intention to screen on the west side. It's not construed as it's something part of the development certificate that full landscape drawings are, are executed just like other components for the development certificate. So the fact that it's very simplistic looking is not an indication of the finished product. And so I just wanted to mention that, yes, that, that was in the, the presentation slide.
Say Kay before you sit down. So your suggestion that it's two different species of, two rows of two different species of trees, is that, is that included in these conditions?
So we have a solar policy manual that we excerpt the solar ordinance. We explain places that they can look at Bowser for pollinator plan information. We try to provide as much information to the petitioners as possible so they can put a good petition together so that they can save time and money and don't have to keep calling us.
Do we need to add that as a condition?
That we have two different species of evergreens?
Two different, two rows of two different species, especially on the west.
Um, actually, if you're asking my opinion, I would prefer not because we do that as a matter of course. In addition to that, we ask for some connectivity and layering in places where we've got extra screening needed. In other words, some shrubs to connect them so it doesn't look like ring around the rosy. So I can assure you that staff takes care of it in as much as we review the SWIP that's done and all the other aspects of the plan that you approve. Should you want to go with either larger than the standard plant material or ask for a triple row or something like that, that we haven't done in the past, just give those directions to staff and the conditions, and we'll take care of it for you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Since we have not yet, I, I didn't hear in that motion that we adopt the findings. So what, what I'd like to do is, is.
I thought.
I made the adopt the findings with the conclusion or the addition of having the distances from the dwelling and also the property line to the project. All, all it was adding for was the distance from the dwelling to the property, from property line to the development. That, so that's the clarification I was looking for. I didn't know if we were voting on the.
I was understanding we were adopting the findings of fact, too.
Okay, I, I didn't hear adopt the findings of fact, nor did I hear adopt the conditions, and I'd like to make an addition to the conditions.
We can make an amendment.
After the first sentence in number, condition number three, I would like to add.
Just.
Thirty-five.
I'm, I'm there, just I don't think everybody knows.
So number three, applicant shall submit a landscape plan prepared by landscape architect in accordance with blah, blah, blah. That includes vegetative screening. Used as a standard for screening and landscaping, subject, subject to staff review and approval. That's where your thing is covered, Commissioner Jacob, that you just asked about. But I'd like to add a sentence after that. Saying, stating that screening, the plan shall include screening on the west, north, and east sides of the property, because those are the sides, as far as I can tell here, where there are residences. The north, the west, and the east are where the residences are.
Okay, but Kay, tell me if I'm wrong, but I thought we covered that parameter as far as the vegetation already.
I, it will be covered, but it being added in the condition is, is perfectly great and it will be followed. And the, the project is twenty feet off the property line, of the west property line. So I, I did have that information, and I was asleep at the switch when Mr. Ryman was asking. Sorry.
But my point of clarification here was, is, okay, you're trying to add a friendly amendment, but the request to amend the first motion, I thought was already covered and isn't necessary. Am I wrong?
I mean, it, it's fine as a condition, if, if it's a point of emphasis. We'll certainly do that in any event. But if it's added to the conditions, that, that works fine for us, too. So it's whatever you folks would like to have.
I guess my reason for putting it in there is that it will, that, that condition will appear in the public record along with the C U P for anybody to look at. So that if they go back to enforce it ten years down the road, it's going to be right there on the C U P. Which it wouldn't be if they, if we didn't add the condition.
Louis and Patrick, are you okay with that being added to your because we're, we're back to where we are? Do we vote on the motions? Well, we can vote on it. We don't have a second yet, but I'm.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was gonna say.
We're saying if we tie it to the first one.
Amendment, the amendment needs to be voted on.
All right, do, do we have a second for that amendment?
I'll second that.
All right, any discussion?
I have no concerns with the east because there really isn't anything to the east of that property, of that solar. It's the north and the west. But if you want to, if you want to put trees off on the east, it looks to me like there's just more trees behind it anyhow. It's just making it more onerous to petitioner, applicant, project. So I'm not going to ask to change your amendment. I just think it's unnecessary to add any, any, anything additional on the east.
Okay, any more discussion, otherwise we can vote on that.
Would you guys be comfortable with a condition that would state something to the effect of the the developer, if a neighboring, if a neighbor were to apply for a solar or put a solar application into Excel and be denied, would you be comfortable with requiring Novel Energy to curtail their system that amount in order to accommodate the neighbor's application until grid capacity is available?
I think we're way out of the boundary of what our petition is for.
And that would be a motion that's not germane to the amendment. We need to deal with the amendment, and then that would be, that would be, that would be, that would be another, that, unless you're asking to amend the amendment.
No.
Okay, so I think.
Do the amendment first.
Do the amendment, and then if you want to bring that up, then we deal with that. So that would be out, but.
Okay, with, if there's no more discussion, I'd like a vote on the amendment. Favor the amendment, say aye.
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 Oppose, say nay. But Patrick?
Could you repeat those, please?
Well, we're voting on the amendment to add west, north, and east screening.
Yeah, I didn't, we didn't.
No, her, her proposal is east to to the landscape architecture. I, I'm waiting for Patrick, if he abstains or votes.
Abstains.
Okay. I have three nays. Do I have three ayes, right? Did I?
I thought you had four ayes and one nay.
I was nay and you're nay, right? I, you said nay. So Patrick said nay. We've got three to four then. Okay.
So it passes.
Patrick abstained.
Oh, he abstained?
He abstained.
But you have.
Well, we still.
So it passes.
We still are, yeah.
Can we discuss the original motion? Is that where we're at?
No, we're back to the original motion.
I would just like to say something in general. And I can't remember which guy said it. It was Commissioner Jacob or Agent Chair Flynn. That we've been doing this as a matter of course, approving these and that, you know, we're, we're allowing as much megawatts to go in for our county as is feasible. But I don't remember any of the megawatt arrays being installed four hundred feet from a neighbor. The closest distance I can remember, seven hundred and fifty feet in Lewiston. Typically, they're a quarter of a mile away from, from my own memory. I could be wrong. I'm not, I'm not one of those diabetic memory people. But I just do not remember us having a one megawatt solar array installed four hundred feet from someone's house. They've been much greater distances.
I, I'd like to speak to the, the Excel one down in Rollingstone off of two forty-eight, the Denzer property that was within almost three hundred feet of ours.
The most recent one, wasn't it?
Yeah. Recently, and that, and this discussion we had tonight came up then.
Then I don't disagree with what you're saying, but to me, that needs to be something that it's a, it's a policy issue. Right now, the policy is three hundred feet. So that needs to be changed. Just say, well, you know, the applicants need to have standards to look to, to adhere to, and if you're going to change something, change the policy, and then the applicant will know going into it in the future.
I just wanted to say that out loud that they have been the same. To me, that's.
Okay, back to the original motion. Are there questions or are we ready to go?
Mr. Chair, just for the record, I did put in that language that Mr. Ryman asked for regarding the property line being twenty feet from the proposed array.
Okay.
So it is up on the screen if anyone wants to review that.
And that's just a fact, but it is. So it's not. So any other questions? Otherwise, let's put it up for vote.
If I wanted to add a condition, would that be appropriate now?
You still can. We haven't passed it, so.
Okay. I would make a motion that we add a condition that if a if a neighboring property owner, I guess anyone within within Excel's portion of the grid there, is it denied an application due to due to grid capacity that Novel Energy Solutions would curtail their system in order to accommodate that application until the grid capacity is available?
Wow.
So first of all, I'm not going to second that. And, and second of all, to me, as an applicant, that would, I would take my application and I'd run. I would not apply, I would not make this application if I knew that I'm going to make all this investment and someone could take half of it away and give it to somebody else, and my investment's going to be sitting there, so.
I understand that. Yeah, this is just the only thing I can come up with.
Mr. Chair, point of order, you do have to determine whether or not there's a second before you can engage in discussion.
Is there a second? Hearing none, we'll go back to the original.
I have one other thing I'd like to do. I have one other thing I'd like to do and this is um, this does not um. Keep us from approving this, I want to state that ahead of time. But I do think it bears mentioning that there are concerns about capacity. So what I I'd like to do is make an amendment to uh, finding number one.
Page, you're on here.
Um, that is page 32. Um, this is the excessive burden on utilities which are, which serve the area. Um, I would say it is not clear. Whether this particular, the addition of this project will create an excessive burden. Which would preclude other residents or farmers to um, put in their own solar. So I think it's important that the records state. It it is not clear, so it it doesn't really meet this finding. Again, not meeting this finding does not preclude the approval of the project, but I think it needs to be in the public record that that we're not sure.
So are you making a motion or just making a statement?
I am saying that we need to change that finding. My motion is that we change the finding to reflect that it is not clear. Whether an excessive burden will be uh, placed on the electrical utility in the area. Which would preclude other farmers, residents from installing their own solar arrays.
Before we have discussion, is there a second on that motion?
I second it.
Okay, I I'm gonna state my opinion on it. Um, I think that Excel has researched it. And I believe that it will not create a burden on the system. Later on, as things get, this is my opinion again, get added, you might reach a saturation point. But at this point in time, I do not believe this will create an excessive burden on those utilities as you're referring. I just differ in, and we thought on it.
Well, as much as I appreciate your opinion, I'd like to hear Excel's opinion as to how much capacity is left on the grid.
Well, uh, we've got the developer here and I think it would be appropriate to hear uh, what he might know on this, because obviously.
We actually asked him and he said he didn't know.
Well, can you clarify anything, otherwise we'll have to move on.
Yeah, um, and Scott Temple, Novel Energy.
Sir, once you remove the mask, please, can you just let people online and bring that?
Please, I'd love to take it off anyway. Um, I I read lips, so these things are.
And just reintroduce yourself, because I don't think the people on.
Okay, yes, Scott Temple, Novel Energy. I I do not know the actual. Amount, the number, the number of, the 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 numerical amount of capacity left in in the system. Um, if I did, I probably couldn't share that. There's one thing I've tried to explain about this is we pay for those capacity reports. So in order for Excel to 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 run that, we have to order it and pay for it. So we own those. Um, I'm not sure if I'm allowed legally to 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 tell you what that number is. Um, I will, for the next meeting, have that answer for you, whether I can tell you or not or or what it is. I just want to be careful on on that because that is something that's proprietary. Um, it's a competitive business and um. There's, there's, there's a lot of reasons for that. Um, but I can, I can say with the, I I just need to be clear on what we're talking about adding. So when we run a a a cap screen and we're we're talking with Excel about adding, you know, a megawatt of capacity, that's where those come in. If you're talking about, I'm, I want to add, you know. There'll be 50, 100 kilowatts from my, my house. Has no bearing, it has no bearing on an individual. So that that retail, that retail market is is completely separate. So if you, if you want to sign up and 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 put panels on your, in your backyard or on your farm, it's a, it's a retail situation. Um, you should have no bearing on capacity from from our system. If you want to come in and do another solar farm, yeah, if we've gotten, you know, if we've paid for the screen, we've done the study, we've got the. The 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 capacity, the inter, the interconnection agreement from Excel. W- w- we're not going to give that up. That that's, that's the whole point. I mean, we're, we're, we spend a lot of time and money and effort to to get that interconnection agreement. Do we have it yet? No, we can't get it yet because we have to have an approved project. This is the catch 22, the dollar solar developers are are in. We're we're close. Um, you know, we do know that there, there is also another, another section, that's the facility impact. Once we get the um, okay to 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 go onto the grid, then we have to figure out how much we have to pay to actually hook up. And that's where those power lines are are going to come in, we'll be paying to add any, any, any poles or anything needed to to fit, that fit the service. Um, we can still get curtailed by Excel even after we have our, when when we get our agreement. You know, we we're operating under the assumption that we can get a megawatt, we're not guaranteed it. Um, this has happened on, geez, three of my last five projects. We got bumped down to 750 kilowatts. Um, so it's, it's a, it's a goofy system. I hope that provides a little clarity on on where we're at. Um, I just wanted to add to that, we have another application coming, I'm coming back next month anyway. Um, I will provide this, some better information on the interconnection process and and capacity and how that works. Um, I'm not the, I'm not the expert on that, I want to make sure I give you the, the, that right information. I think you're right to ask. I I appreciate your your diligence and your professionalism here tonight, I really do. Um, if I can just add to, um, I think I'm gonna tweak the, that site plan and add some additional. Uh, screening from the, from the neighboring residents, I hear you. We want to be good neighbors. Um, we're here to mitigate, we're here to to lessen the impact, we're here to be a, an asset to the community. So um, look for some changes on that. We will uh, provide some better information on on the capacity at the next month's meeting.
We're being talked to when you just said that last part about screening, I think it's worth repeating, the neighbors, what you just said. They, they were having a discussion, I don't know that they heard you.
Oh, oh, okay, no, I just, I just said, I I I agree that some additional screening can be put in from the, from the, from the neighbors who are only 20 feet off that line. You have to, okay, the briars, but I think we should be able to shift, uh, shift the array a little further over and we'll add a double, a double row of trees in there. Um, two different species, make it, make it a little thicker and and more substantial. And we hear that, we can do that and we're, we're willing to do that.
Um, just.
Wait, you're, I just wanted to post, say that your, your motion is written up there. And that's a substitute for the first sentence, right? Is that correct?
Yes.
That's what we will not, not change.
I, I, it should be um. May not. I I, it's not clear. I wanted to ask um, or just make one comment. We've apparently received um, anecdotal um, accounts of um, Excel Energy denying. Um, the retail market.
Really?
You're, what you're calling the retail market. So a resident or a farm denying their uh, solar arrays. Because there wasn't enough capacity due to the big solar gardens being, going in. So I hear what you say, but that's not what we're hearing. So I I guess I'd like to get clarification on that next week.
Yeah.
Thank you, though.
You're welcome, yeah, I, I will um, talk to our policy and uh, interconnection specialist on that and see if I can't get some supplemental information and explain. It's a really complicated thing, so the more information we can get out there to help explain it to people is is good and we'll definitely make sure we do that.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me in on your debate.
Can you confirm, Kelly, that that's the verbiage that you want?
Um.
I think you wanted something different.
It is unclear whether the addition of this project will create an excessive burden and preclude other landowners from installing their own solar arrays. And um, but, okay, so, yeah, that's okay. Um, I guess the last sentence does need to be changed, though, no other impacts. No, that's good.
You need it.
Um, you could just delete or utilities. Well, what it, what would we do there? Um, I would just delete that, that whole sentence because. Unless you've got an idea, Stephanie.
I guess the question is whether or not you intended to change the will not to will. Um, I, we can, there's a couple of different things we can do. We could take that lesson, last sentence out, that would clean it up a little bit. We could also take out excessive from the first sentence and have it read that the burden, there may be a burden, but it doesn't seem to be excessive. So I guess however you wish to proceed on that, I can put that language together.
I I guess I would consider it excessive if it denies another landowner um, the opportunity to do a solar array.
Remove the last sentence.
Um, but we don't know. I mean, the point, what I'm try, the point I'm trying to make is we don't know. We don't have the information we need, so we can't say whether it will not create an excessive, excessive burden. That's my point.
That last sentence anticipated, should be, it's kind of wishy washy to begin with.
I mean, the best I can do there, Stephanie, is just to say, it might. Might not.
Well, it's in the record, though.
Yeah.
This way it's in the record.
It's unclear. It is unclear.
So later, it doesn't matter.
So we, we could change the top of this to.
Could create?
Yes, that looks good to me.
All right, so the, so this is the language that you are proposing for, for your motion to amend, correct?
Okay.
It doesn't look right. Aye, all right, I'm fine with that, I'm sorry, I didn't see that. Okay, is that exactly what you have and you seconded that? Is there any other discussion? If not, just vote on it. All in favor of this change to number one, say aye.
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 Oppose, say nay.
Nay.
One nay. Patrick, what is he doing? Aye, okay, thank you, I just can't see him well. So we got one nay, one nay and six ayes, all right? So we can move back to our findings of fact and, and uh, possible approval of the conditions. There's no other discussion? I'll entertain a vote on the motion that was before us to approve the conditions and findings of fact. Say aye if you approve of that, aye.
Aye.
Nay if you don't.
Oh, 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 a.
You're a nay?
Yes, a, yes.
A. Is there any nays? Make it easier, all right? So all in favor? Now, this will have to go before the board, uh, the county board on March 8th, 9 a.m. This one, you guys have your next hearing on it. So we voted for a recommendation and now it's in the commissioner's hands. And then uh, we've got a, another one here, I gotta move through my paperwork and get to number two. I have 227 in my book. Uh, this is uh, planning commission uh, 2172202. And again, it's a request, petitioners seek conditional use permit to allow one megawatt large-scale solar energy system. And the agricultural resource conservation zoning district can pursuant to chapter 12.3 of the Winona County's or zoning ordinance. And I think Eric has this one too, right? And it's Eric.
Yeah, yeah, I could, I could present that. Uh, again, this is pretty similar.
Okay, sounds, sounds good, Eric, I'll just let you do it and then just let me know if you need a different slide or something and Stephanie and I will work on that.
Okay. Okay, this is a CUP request by Michael and Nicole Modis in Novell Energy LLC. To allow a one megawatt large-scale solar. Again, the zoning district is agricultural resource conservation and it's from chapter 12.3 of the zoning ordinance. The yellow boundary on this parcel identifies the, the project uh, location. Uh, point out, uh, it's in the Ridgeway area. In this case, this site is on the north side of I-90. Kind of as a crow flies, I think, from the one, last one we discussed, I believe it's about a mile. I believe um, the uh, other one is uh, somewhat to the southwest of the plate that you see in front of you. Uh, I-90 borders the property on the south and County Road 12 borders it on the north. Uh, next slide. Uh, a new driveway would be constructed off of County Road 12 to access the site. And they would need a access permit from the highway department to utilize that road. Uh, looking at this map, you can see again, there is a couple of dwellings. Um, one directly north on the north side of County Road 12. As well as, I believe, a relative that is a, a neighboring uh, house that sits to the northeast of the property. On the left side, you can see that parcel that has that U-shaped driveway, that is the Bush Cemetery. Okay, next slide. Uh, again, this is Novell Energy. Um, they've um, have made numerous previous applications in the county. Um, it is a 12.39 acre parcel that was outlined. And I believe eight and a half of that would be dedicated to the project area for the solar. Uh, currently, the property is used for cropland. And again, the nearest neighbor, neighboring dwellings are approximately 300 feet to the north and 300 feet to the northwest. And then 1600 feet to the west. Um, County Road 12, I believe, is considered a major collector. And so there's a type, typo uh, on that sentence, it should actually be that there is 130-foot setback from the center line of the road. Just so, just make that known, I believe the mapping exhibits and the packet and the application indicate that they wouldn't commence. Um, any closer than 130 feet from the center of County Road. Uh, this, okay, next slide. Uh, this is from the Geological Atlas, um, from 1984. That shows kind of the mapped sinkholes in the area. You can just kind of make out the green, the mo, the, the modest property sits right above the I-90 emblem for reference. Just north of that, and you can see that there's little clusters of sinkholes kind of to the uh, west and to the north. And then you look all the way to the east under Marie's Drive, uh, so that it is considered a high sinkhole probability area. Next slide. Uh, this photo exhibit was put together by Amanda from the Winona County Soil and Water and it accompanied her report that she did. And she actually was commenting more on the uh, Wetland Conservation Act review that was also submitted earlier. And part of most of these solars is that they do have to file a joint um, state, local and federal uh, wetland determination and the county does review those. And in this case, she does look at his historic crop. And in this case, she does look at his historic cropping and photo exhibits. And, uh, she's got areas on this map as points of interest where there's like a waterway and on one, and there's a little cluster of trees on the south. And then there's a, a culvert outlet right underneath County Road 12 that could be, um, in interest. And, you know, to summarize her report is that, uh, as the LGU, that'd be Winona County and Winona County Soil and Water, we wouldn't be comfortable enough to sign off on the Wetland Conservation Act application because we think there's some, some things that warrant a further, um, investigation or a level two before we do that. So now I just wanted to point that out in this case, uh, with this one, that there is um, some elements of the soil and vegetation and cropping history before we could say that there's no areas that could be considered, um, wetland areas on this property. Uh, next slide. In this case, I believe in the packet and application, um, uh, we did receive a screening and planting plan that would be a raise along the perimeter. Um, landscape plan, pollinator plan would be co-reviewed by SWCD and county staff prior to any issuance of a development certificate. Uh, 5,000 cash escrow for three years held for establishment of that screening. A decommissioning plan being minimum of 5,000 financial surety cash, cash escrow preferred conditions. Also in the packet, the applicant submitted a, um, a SWIP Stormwater Pollution and Prevention Plan uh, as far as what would be, uh, done as far as preparation with that site as well as the wetland delineation report, which I mentioned previously. Next slide. Uh, this is a first type of solar application that the applicants are proposing a different type of solar. Um, um, equipment, I guess would be the best word to say. Um, these are the large box solar units in which each one of these large boxes would have a 32 dual-axis trackers that would be used. Essentially, they follow the movement of the sun. Yeah, each one would contain about 78 modules on a tractor and they'd be positioned in somewhat rows uh, be with 35 and 70-foot separations on the landscape, both perpendicular and lateral uh, on the project area. Uh, keep, these are, uh, considerably larger. Um, at full tilt or, uh, with each of these tracking units, they do get close to the 35 feet in total height. Um, we had, I guess, asked for verification because we do, uh, for non-agricultural structures, we do have a 35-foot height requirement. And, uh, at full tilt, uh, it's staff's understanding that they would not exceed that 35 feet. Uh, next slide. I think this diagram shows kind of the difference compared to the other solar applications that we've seen in the past. Those blue-hatched, um, boxes that are on each one would be showing these modular tracker units and how they're, you can see how they're kind of staggered, both north to south and east to west and staggered. And to get, um, the capacity of the one megawatt, um, I, you know, I guess I, we haven't uh, received much input or information from, uh, contractors yet, so maybe the, uh, consultant can elaborate more on these two. Uh, but this would be the preliminary plan showing the layout. Um, again, showing 130 feet from the, from the, uh, center of the road and looking at the, uh, array units, uh, the, the far one in the very southeast. You know, we measured about 300 feet from that house. Uh, the ones that are right at 130-foot setback from the center line, you can see there's two that are sitting right behind the 130-foot setback. The closest one would be about 300 feet to the house to the north. And then, uh, again, the cemetery is that U-shaped driveway that you see kind of, uh, uh, in the northwest portion of the, of the project area. Next slide. Landscaping and screening pollinator plan. Uh, Novell Energies has submitted a, a preliminary plan at this point. Again, before a development certificate permit would be issued, our department and Soil and Water would have to review the spec, the, I think, the, uh, specifics of the planting and the, or, you know, the, the, the materials and, and make sure that it, uh, is what, uh, we would be looking for, for adequate, uh, screening. Um, in this case, the applicants with their initial application have proposed screening on the north. That would be shielding it from County Road 12 and they'd be, um, screening on the east. That would be the area of the, the adjacent, uh, house there in the northeast corner as well as the north um, facing house off of County Road 12. And they've indicated preliminarily that evergreens would be comprised of at least two species, I believe, uh, spruces. Um, for resiliency, size and spacing then would have to follow our standards of 9.15C of the ordinance. Next slide. Yeah, this would be the preliminary screening, um, showing where they've indicated, uh, staff's understanding that those uh, yellow perimeters that you see above the black hatched areas would be their designated planting scheme at this point. Uh, prime soils and slopes, the eight and a half acres for this project consists of type three E's. Uh, the designation of E after that soil type indicates that it is prone to erodible conditions. It's got the type of soil with loss and slope and somewhat of the drainage that it basing it might be on, that it is prone to erosion conditions. Uh, however, the Seaton Stilt Loam is also, according to the Soil Survey, considered a farmland of statewide importance and considered prime. This, looking at the range of slopes throughout that parcel, it ranges from 6 to 12% with the 12 or steeper slopes more towards the south as you get towards that I-90 corridor. Next slide. Uh, the petitioners seek a CUP and staff could not identify a specific date or event determination other than the generalization on the application by the applicant that is temporary, which would be a 25 to 30-year lease. However, staff's analysis has been that then of a conditional use permit at this time with this request. Uh, we did receive a Pleasant Hill Township acknowledgement form in conjunction with this. Staff's understanding that they did meet with Pleasant Hill Township in the January meeting and the chair, Ronald Frick, has indicated, uh, that they have no comments at this time. Our conclusion recommendation is consider all the testimony, uh, all the materials before making findings for the criteria and supports the planning commission's decision. If the decision is recommend approval, staff has included 16 conditions for consideration at this time. Yeah, and with that, if there's any questions, I can answer them.
Eric?
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's not so much a question, but just, uh, to kind of, um, reiterate what you said about the Soil and Water Conservation District and their unwillingness with the wetland. What, what all was that about?
Um, you know, it was almost independent, but I think it was timely because we had received that, uh, towards the end of the year last, you know, in December. But then, since it's related to the site, Amanda reviewed both of these sites as it related to their wetland delineation report. They did include that in their application packet, though. And it's, uh, basically an analysis of the soil types, vegetation types, and whether or not they found hydrology in their sample points. And, um, you know, the, on a general sense, you know, we'd support that most of that is because of the slope is non-hidric. That means, yeah, there's not wet vegetation, but there is some areas of concern where there's a drainage way and some pockets of trees. And we, you know, again, we'd want to verify that there isn't a, uh, what you could almost consider like a prairie pothole wetland-type, uh, situation. So we'll be weighing in independently of that on, that other than this conditional use permit that the county would be requesting for further, uh, analysis and, uh, proof that, uh, no wetland sites would be developed, you know, in conjunction with the solar project.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Eric? And do we have anybody, um, for the petitioner to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, commissioners. Um, Scott Temple with Novell Energy. We have an office at 2303 Y Cliff in St. Paul. I rarely go there. This, uh, this is a little different, different project. Yeah, um, we are, um, trying to start to move towards these dual-axis trackers. Um, just want to give a, just like a brief overview on, on, on the technology and how it works. Um, in a nutshell, they're, uh, higher efficiency panels. We use fewer panels and there's more open space. Um, they also, like you said, they, they track both east to west and north to south. So they maintain that optimum 90-degree angle to the sun for a longer period of time during the day. So we increase our maximum production for a longer period of time. So we're not producing more than a megawatt, but we're producing a megawatt for a longer period of time. So it's a, it's a more efficient, um, more efficient use of the land. And so the big driver why we do that, they are taller. Um, they're, they're put on a, a 20 by 20 concrete pad with a tillister in the middle. And then it's, they're layered, li, literally put down on top of that with a crane. So they're, they're a big unit and, you know, they're probably about the size of this, this room. They're 15 feet tall. And then when they tilt up, it'll tilt to, to, to 30 on the, on the high piece. Um, they won't be at that 30-foot maximum all the time. Basically only when we need that maximum tilt in the, in the winter. They're taller in the winter. Um, but, uh, that's kind of how they work. Um, you know, they, they, they track the sun like that. Um, they're rated for wind and snow. Um, they're a, a Mechatron project, uh, product. Um, there's, it's interesting design is actually no, very few moving parts. It's a hydraulic. It's a hydraulic thing that pivots some back and forth, so it's not gear drive driven or anything like that. Um, can provide lots of information on it. We're, we're pretty excited about them. Um, like I said, they are, they are a little taller, but, um, there's more open space in between these. It also gives us, uh, more flexibility to put them in, um, uh, situations like this where we have kind of an odd, odd-shaped parcel. Um, I do need to point out, I think we have on our plan, we have 100-foot setback to delineated. So we're going to need to shift that back 30 feet if that's, um, 130, 130-foot setback. So the first two, those first two trackers will probably move down to the, to the south to accommodate that. But I just noticed that when he was saying the 135 feet, I believe we are at 100 on this plan, so we will, we will amend that. Do you have any questions for me?
I have a question. I'm just looking at this that shows the placement of each of them. And, um, any way you can put them closer together? Oh, I'm sorry, 229. Um, can you put them closer together to use up less land or are they placed that way for a reason?
They're, they're placed with that spacing for a, a reason. Uh, one is the shading. Since they're taller, they'll shade each other. Um, and that's, that's mainly the, that's mainly the reason.
I wondered if that wasn't it.
You know, it needs, that needs, that needs the, the space to operate. Um, depending on slope and, you know, other factors, we can, we can potentially tighten them up. I think we're going to have to do a little rejiggering on this to, to make sure those, um, we can get those two panels in without, uh, uh, having setback encroachments. And if we can't, we'll lose them. We'll just have to, have to redo some because we need to respect that 300-foot setback as well.
Thank you.
So the 20 by 20 concrete pad, is that the size of the panel as well? Is that a little smaller than the pad?
No, um, the, 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 the pad is set in, then there's a pillisher that comes in and the array is put on top. Uh, there's 78 of the, of the panels on there. I believe the dimensions are 33 by 55. So it's a, um, it's, it's sizable.
Yeah.
The, the, the pads, um, I think they're like, I think they're like a foot. Um, it's just, they're reen, they're reinforced, reinforced concrete and then it's got a reinforced concrete um, superstructure inside that we can put the, with the pillister down on.
I have a couple of questions. First of all, where are they made?
Uh, these are American-made. The Mechatrons in California.
Okay, so I think my bigger concern here is these, I'm gonna call them foundations that you're putting them on. All the other applications we've done, the theory is, is that it's temporary and we're going to be able to convert it back to cropland easily. It's gonna take a lot of excavation to excavate those bases out. I mean, the topsoil is gonna, you know, what are we gonna do with the topsoil and if and when these things ever go away? It seems much more like it would destroy the cropland.
Yeah, to, to decommission them, we need to come in and break up, break up that concrete. Um, so it will be more of a disturbance right on that, right on that pad site. There's less disturbance where there was never any disturbance, you know, previously. But there's definitely a trade-off. They're more expensive to put in and they're more expensive to take out.
Yes, my concern is what's, what's happening with the topsoil? And how's it gonna be protected and is it gonna, will it go back in the same place?
If they're digging, they gotta dig, they gotta dig deeper than a foot if it's a foot of concrete. They're, they're basically scraping off all your topsoil.
Yeah, this, this will never be a field again.
It's changing it currently.
Yeah, we'll take more, it'll take more remediation, yes.
Well, there's wetlands all around it, so that right there, too.
My concern would be, wouldn't it be easier to walk away from a $50,000 financial surety than to dig out all that concrete? I don't know if that's enough money.
The technology does sound pretty exciting, though, if it's hydraulics, that's actually moving it with the sun. But I don't know if this is the appropriate spot of land. It'd be better if it was on, on tillable soil.
Mr. Chair, point of order, um, you're engaging in discussion rather than, uh, obtaining information from the petitioner.
Thank you. There's no other comments, questions? Stick around though, in case we might have.
You want me to stay here?
No, uh, later on, when we have a discussion, we might ask some other questions.
And the, going back to the single axer tracker, single access tracker on, on this site is still a possibility. We would prefer that over no project at all. Um, like I said, the, the dual-axis fits in, in here a lot better. Um, I don't know if we can get a megawatt on the configuration of the site with signal, single access. But if that's your desire, we're more than willing to try.
Okay.
Friendly addition of the staff support?
Yep.
Or not addition, but just clarification. Uh, in the discussion about soil health, um, I, I do need to point out that obviously pollinator mixes are included, you know, for a 25-year period, creating a CRP-like condition. If these are higher on the, uh, pilasters, um, cut plant and other, uh, of the taller, most deeply rooted prairie plants can be used, which we often cannot use in the movable shorter 14-footers in the mix. So that does change the dynamic of soil health, uh, toward the positive. So I just, I, I didn't want that to be floating around as, as a big concern. But obviously, concrete removal, uh, costs more. We had. But obviously, concrete removal costs more. We had to decommission or we had to have a forced decommissioning of a wind facility that had faulty parts to it. It was part of a lawsuit and that was obviously quite a lot deeper, but involved. So, you know, there would be some tearing up and so on, and that's, that's part of decommissioning costs. Yes. So I just wanted to mention about the species mix slightly different opportunity there. So, thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to open the public meeting.
So moved.
Okay, Kelly first and then Lou for second. All in favor say aye of opening a public hearing. Those opposed say nay. Patrick's got his hand up, so that's unanimous. So now, anybody wishing to speak for or against this project, the podium is open to you. Again, anybody wishing to speak for or against this petition, please come forward. For the third time, anybody wishing to speak for or against this petition, please come forward.
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Do I have a second? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. So the public hearing is closed. Now, any discussions from the commission now on some of the issues that you were bringing up there?
I'm going to have a hard time getting by. Size of those concrete pads. And the dirt is going to have to be moved and that dirt never being put. There will be no way to store that topsoil and manage it and put it back in the exact same place and ever make, ever make. It would, it will never be crop land again, whereas when we're just driving stakes in and pulling them out in 30 years, it could be converted back to crop land. So I don't doubt that we can grow pollinator plants and all that. But we're just, in my view, this, this is something different than we've ever proved before and I don't, I don't see it being able to go back to cropping.
Is there a way we can change the conditions to not allow concrete or something like that?
The applicant said they would be receptive of what he called a single axis tracker, which would be the, the old, old style. That's really not the application for us. This is, that's correct. The application that, I mean, I, I personally strive to try to approve every application that comes before, before us, because I want to drive the economy. I want people to feel like Winona County is open for, for business, but crop land that we can't put back, just, I, I don't know that I can get behind approving this application at all.
Mr. Chair, would it make a, would it make sense to table this one? To allow the petitioner to come back with modified, with a modified petition to use single access trackers? Is that what it was called?
Well, I think, yeah, you could do it that way, or you could not recommend this and that they could repetition for a different solar farm.
I'd, I'd move to table it.
Do I have a second?
Well, I just want to clarify.
Well, she's moving to table it and there's not much there. I'm asking for a second. And then we have discussed it now. Go ahead.
Well, it sounds like the way you proposed it, they would have to pay twice to apply. The way Kelly's proposing it, they would not have to resubmit the application fee.
I would like to ask the applicant.
I would like to ask Kay for some guidance on this because this is like changing your house to a shed or, I mean, it's a different, different petition.
Changing the shed to a mansion.
Yeah, there you go.
Mr. Chair, so in the, in the interest of a good faith situation with the County Planning and Environmental Services Department, I have in my purview to waive the fee if they chose to bring a CUP, IUP application back to you with a modification so that they're not penalized for their offering to alter the project, should you desire that. So that we can, you know, we can make that accommodation if you, if you wish it.
Well, thank you. And that takes the monetary part out of this. All right. It's a discussion of the proposal in front of you.
Well, I thought she said if they want to modify it, which is what I was tabling it for, to give them the chance to modify it, right?
We haven't discussed, maybe they don't want to modify it. I mean, you motioned to table it.
Said he wanted to. He said he would be willing.
He would modify it if it was not going to pass. But we haven't gotten that far yet.
And it'll take lots of paperwork for him to submit a different design. So we probably should just start all over.
Is it possible to ask the, the matter a few questions about the base?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, we can call on the applicant.
But we've got the table on here and I think we need to have, and that's our motion. So now we'll bring the information and the tabling it is the correct one. And as you mentioned, you have concern about the farmland. I have concern about the 50,000 covering this type of project as well. So there are a number of things. And also 35 feet high, that's a big tree. Cover that. So it's a whole different perception.
Nothing like we've done before.
We have not done that before, that I recall. So I just have some concerns there. Maybe they can be ironed out here, maybe not. But that, that's my thoughts on it and I entertain anybody else's thoughts on this tabling.
Well, I would, I would recommend that we ask the, that we call, ask the petitioner some questions.
You can.
Okay.
Come on forward. That's why we have him stay. Yes, Kay. And we'll go back, I'll go back to Patrick after we get some more information. And I can't see him from here that, that Stephanie's got a kind of block there when his thumb has up. Okay, sir, can you help us out on some of this stuff?
So there seem to be a lot of concerns about returning the land to productive farm, farmland and whether the financial surety would be enough, et cetera. You mentioned a willingness to go back to the other kind of solar panels. Is, if we tabled this, would that allow you to modify this or would you be coming back with a whole new thing anyway?
Uh, no, we can, we can change the design fairly, fairly easily.
Okay.
Well, we can, we can change the design. I don't know how easy it's going to be to, to fit in there like, you know, like I said, with the constraints on there. But we can certainly have that done for the last, for, for, for the next meeting if you, if you would table it.
Well, my question would be just a little bit more direct would be, would you prefer that we table it? Or would it be easier for you if we just deny it and you come back with a new application that Kay said that you probably wouldn't have to pay for? Which, which way is?
I would prefer to keep this one moving through, through table. I believe I've gotten some, some good notes. I've, I, I just say it like it is. I, I think you brought up some good points.
Yeah, without going through the discussion to try to approve it. And we can't tell you whether we would approve it or deny it, but I think is it probably a real probability that it would be.
I think I've heard enough good reasonings from you to go back to my company and say, we should make this change.
My question has to do on your basis, how many yards of cement will you be putting in your base for each one of these things? Do you have any estimation?
I do not know that. I can, I can get that. I have all the, I have all the specs, but that's not something I have committed to memory.
Well, what I'm going about is the old harvester silos put many, many hundreds of yards in them. And if you're putting that weight, you're going to have a quite a bit of material, of cement going in there. Now, if you got to remove that, that is going to be very expensive to move that unless it's put in proper. Are, are you going to drill and put pillars down to the frost line or are you going down further to hit a base? Are you getting a friction stop on that base?
I, to be honest with you, we haven't built one of these yet. To be, to be completely honest with you.
So you don't know how far in, how size the hole you're going, are you going to go down square all the way? Or are you going to go post structure down to hold it up? Because if there are ways you could put in there pins in there that the spot could be broken and all you'd have to do is hook on a crane and you pick out a whole big chunk, chunk of that out one time.
Yeah, that's what we do with our transformer pads. They're actually precast. We just set them in there and pick them up and take them out when we go.
Yeah, but, but we're, we're dealing with something in Minnesota and you're going to have to get down below the frost line if you don't have the even expanding on it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure if it's a, for frost footing or a pillar. I imagine it's going to be, have to be individually designed according to the soil types and conditions.
I just can't imagine the amount of wind leverage on a panel the size of this room sticking 35, 30 feet in the air. I, I just can't even get my mind around the kind of. We're looking at the same amount of cement steam that has to go into a harvester silo into that type of situation, I think. To have the right base.
Well, clearly it's exciting.
But I think.
Possibility in the future, but when we look at Winona County Planning ordinances, as Steve was pointing out myself, it doesn't seem to fit the modality that we have outlined in our ordinance as far as reclamation and taking care of it. And it seems like there's a lot of questions here on how this could apply to our planning and zoning ordinance. And I have that concern as well. And as Kelly's pointed out, perhaps the tabling it is her best option so that we can redo it. Go ahead, Lynn.
Okay, just ask for clarification on tabling. Does that mean it does not get presented to the county board?
Right, right. I think it's a nice opportunity to give you a chance to put some more thought in it, look at our ordinance. You just went through one in very extensive terms. And perhaps this is the most helpful way of dealing with this tonight.
Yeah, our, we have an application that we've put in for, for next month that has another one of these on it too.
Okay.
So.
Research.
We, we probably want to circle the wagons on that one.
Yeah.
It sounds like.
I will stick to just this one. And we've had a motion in a second. And we can discuss it a long time, but I have a feeling of where we want to go on this. So unless there's other questions, I'm going to call for a vote to table it. All those in favor of tabling this petition, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Patrick's got his hand up. I can just see it. So we unanimously have tabled a second petition tonight.
Did we ever get to let Patrick at us with you? Did he want to have a time on the floor?
I can hardly ever see his hand and all that. Well, his hand was right up at, at the vote though. So I think we, we solved that concern.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I've been listening diligently through this whole evening with the comments and the back and forth. And there are many points that I've just be taken up airspace. I think some of them were well thought out, very articulated, you know, articulated very well. So I wanted to keep things moving here, but I wasn't, I had an opportunity and I chose not to get into discussion because many points, like I said here, were, were brought up, that were well said.
Okay, thank you, Patrick.
You're welcome.
With that said, any Jordan, any updates from the Board of Adjustments?
Yes, we voted on one variance today. Robert and Marilyn Hurt in Dakota. And they needed a variance to put a sewage treatment system two feet from the front yard property line right away and 10 feet from the side yard. Or instead of the required 10 feet and five feet from the side yard property line instead of the required 10 feet and seven feet from a structure instead of the required 20. And we approved that.
Thank you. Steve, anything on county boards?
Yeah, I'm a little unprepared. I was not at the last planning commission meeting and the county board I attended remotely. So I wanted to, staff, can you, can you, we, we approved all of the applications that the planning commission put forward, right? Okay, yeah, that would be my.
There you go.
Not as prepared as I usually am.
Thank you. There's nothing else. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Patrick's got his thumb up too. So, so we're done.